I would like to call to order the August 21st meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, welcome. It looks like everybody survived their eclipse parties today. I hope everybody enjoyed that, it was a unique experience. We are very happy to have with us tonight for the presentation of colors, the Boy Scout Troop Four from Utah Baptist Church. Please join me in standing.
Close. Scout salute. Please join me in saying of the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color Guard two. About face? Forward march. Color Guard business.
Thank you very much. And the color guard, after our invocation, will ask you to come forward and be recognized. And Commissioner Honeycutt will have a pen for you. We're very happy to have Pastor Mike Waters from Parkwood Baptist Church here for our invocation. Welcome.
Let us pray. Our Father God, thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, and thank you for your creation. Thank you, Lord, just for your handiwork, and we, Lord, seek to honor your word through Paul's instruction to Timothy, Lord, that prayers and thanksgiving and petitions be made on behalf of all men, especially for those who lead in authority. And so, Father, we pray for those who lead our nation, Lord, we pray for those who lead our state, and, Lord, we especially pray for those who lead this community. We pray, Father, for this group of leaders, that you would give them wisdom. Lord, we ask that you would give them, Lord, a sense of unity. Lord, we certainly need unity in our community and our nation. Lord, give them courage to stand, Lord, where conviction is necessary, and give them flexibility, Lord, where they need to give. And, Lord, we just continue to seek the best, Lord, for the common good. And we thank you for these that devote their time on a weekly and monthly basis, Lord, to lead our community. Father, bless them in all they do, in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend Waters. We appreciate you being with us tonight. And at this time, we'd like for our Boy Scout Troop Four representatives to come to the microphone and introduce themselves. And Commissioner Honeycutt will have a pen to my right for you as you go. If you would introduce yourself and what you like about scouting.
My name is Cody Meadows, and I really enjoy scouting because it teaches me a lot of the basic things that someone should know in order to carry out everyday life.
Thank you.
My name is Dylan Martin, and I like scouting because it's fun and it's an adventure.
Great, thank you. We appreciate you being with us tonight. And Commissioner Honeycutt has your pens for you over there. Okay, all of you have copies of minutes of our previous meeting before you. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve or correct the minutes. Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. And next, we have the approval of the agenda. I would propose that we adjust our agenda to add one item, which would be G seven, which would be the addition of a discussion of the Lake Concord Road Bridge closing. And I would make that in a form of a motion that we approve the agenda as presented with that one addition. Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we move to recognitions and presentations. And from Planning and Development, we're happy to have Susie Morris to recognize some outgoing planning and zoning commission members.
Tonight, we are recognizing Ms. Shannon Frye for her service on the Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Frye was appointed by the Board of Commissioners to the Planning and Zoning Commission in July of 2010 and has served on the commission for seven years. Shannon served in the peer elected leadership role of Vice Chair in 2012 and again in 2013. In 2014, Shannon was elected to the leadership role of Chair and currently holds that position on the commission. Shannon volunteered in 2012 for the text amendment committee and has been a part of that committee ever since. As a planner by trade, Shannon brought a unique perspective to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Her knowledge and understanding of the principles and laws related to planning and zoning helped guide many case deliberations. Under Shannon's leadership, the Planning and Zoning Commission tackled several new uses, challenging cases, and the restructuring of the Cabarrus County Development Ordinance. From the consideration of reception facilities and variances to the public hearing for the county's latest 650 acre solar project, Shannon led the commission with professionalism and poise often commented on by applicants and meeting attendees. Shannon has been a tremendous asset to the Planning and Zoning Commission for the last seven years. She and her sense of humor will be greatly missed. Thank you very much for your service to the citizens of Cabarrus County. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I just want to take a moment, because like Susie said, I've been with the city of Charlotte now for 17 years, and I recognize what a challenge it is for the staff that comes here. And I want to thank Rich as well, because with their leadership, they've assisted me at the podium as I sit in that chair position. And I just want to thank the both of them here tonight for their guidance and support while I've been serving. So, thank you all.
Great. Thank you. And we certainly appreciate your service on that board. Seven years is quite a long...
Lucky number.
That's right, exactly. So, we hate to see you going, but thank you very much for everything you've done.
Absolutely. Thank you all.
Okay, now, we have from Active Living in Parks, Brian Hagler and Alex Beck for a presentation.
Thank you so much for having us. And I'm going to pull this up real quick. We have just a little photograph here to help you understand how much work went into this project. We hopefully will have our recipient, he is actually on the way here, hopefully he's walking in the door here shortly. But this project was approached to us by, we had a need at Rob Wallace Park specifically for a structure that was going to house our educational animals. And this structure that was brought to us actually took care of many needs for us. We had storage issues, we had places where the animals needed to stay, but also, this is going to provide another educational habitat for our animals. So, what you'll see here is we had a young man that approached us with this project, and as you can see, has amazing skills with carpentry. He came up with is a overall structure for us made out of Trex material that provides, as you see on the left-hand side, storage, but also the strength to house those aquariums and terrariums. As you can imagine how much weight a 50-gallon aquarium is going to hold with a gallon of water weighing eight-plus pounds. So, it's a lot of weight that it actually physically has to hold as well, and with the stipulations that they're not going to be able to create this on-site. They have to build this off-site and then bring this in and have it fit like a glove into the space. So, just to highlight, this provided with us the additional storage place of about, say, 40 square feet of storage, the areas to provide our brochures, flyers, upcoming programs, and then also the space for all of our critters that we use to showcase. And he's walking in now. Wonderful. So, we have all these pieces here that house our turtles and our reptiles coming through, and it is a wonderful project that we are delighted to have. Just to give you a figure to come off with, we had this project bid out to see what a custom cabinet would cost to fulfill our needs, and it was $5,000-plus to have this project complete. This project was actually completed with less than $2,000 worth of material. So, this is just a huge thank you for all that Seth has done for us, and we just wanted to recognize him for what he provided for the county, the residents, because not only is this a habitat for our animals, but this is also educational opportunities for anyone who walks into Rob Wallace Park. So, we're just tickled to death and greatly appreciative of what he has done, and I'm glad he was able to make it here this evening.
It was close.
So, I would like to present you with this plaque and just thank you so much for what you've done.
Well, thank you. Thank you for letting me.
Absolutely. Y'all would like to take a picture real quick? You're welcome to. Seth, would you like to say anything?
I just want to say, thank y'all for allowing me to do this, because otherwise, I wouldn't have had a project to do in order to get my eagle. And it helped me out a lot. I mean, knowing that I could help the community close to me, that meant a lot to me. And it's fun, because I got to kind of work with the park and get to know them a little bit better and help out the community.
Great. Thank you very much. We appreciate what you've contributed to Cabarrus County, and congratulations on achieving eagle and scouting. As a father of an eagle scout, that's a big deal.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I see you have a lot of family here to support you tonight, and we're glad to have all of them as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we move now to recognition from Todd Shanley from ITS. And this is, and Todd can help me out on this, but I had the honor of receiving this award from the annual digital county survey for...
It's our sixth year in the category of 150,000 to 250,000 in population.
Right. And so, this award was presented at our national conference in Columbus, Ohio this past month. So, I was very proud to receive that on behalf of you. And if you can share a little information about just exactly what this means, I think you're better qualified to do that than I.
Absolutely. So, this is an annual survey that the partners, the Digital County Survey and NACO partnered together to survey all the counties in America. And we have ranked for the sixth year in a row, this is number five for us. We continue to strive to be number one. Every year, we're a little bit disappointed when we're not, so know that your team is fighting hard to be number one. We also, the things that we have accomplished this year to be in number five were electronic plan review, some of our continued partnerships with our 9-on-1 projects, the school systems, things like that. So, those are things that the organization identified as being successful projects that ranked us fifth in the nation in that category.
Great. Well, thank you. It's mighty nice to be at a national meeting like that and be recognized out of the hundreds of counties that are there. So, we certainly appreciate your efforts. Congratulations.
Thank you. We're definitely proud of our team, and as you guys all know, because you work with all of them, they're very dedicated and talented professionals, and we just thank you for the opportunity to be a success and all the things that you guys have given us. Thank you.
You're just, you're number one to us.
Thank you.
That's right. Let's give them a round of applause. Okay, next on our agenda are informal public comments. I have not received any yellow cards tonight, but if anybody would like to have a matter they'd like to come speak on, I would welcome you to the podium at this time. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Board, I bring your greeting in Jesus' name. I won't go say nothing tonight, but when I spoke to the law, your Lord didn't say nothing to say, baby, African American need some help. I know it's been a while since Brother Freeman been on your board. We ain't had no blacks on the board. We need one of y'all white brothers to step up. Out my events for Dr. King, Mr. Mike Downing, he's the only one I seen from the county commission to come. So, something wrong somewhere. You supposed to be for all people? Show us that you for all people. Lord, we'll change things. I seen the eclipse today to let you know there is a God, you know? And I thank God for you still got prayer. But I have been keeping up with a little bit. I've been sick, had a stroke about the deck, parking deck. If in a way that we got enough revenue, enough money, Cabarrus County, to get it done without the public paying for it, what it'd have to be, y'all make the decision, we'll look for y'all to make the best decision, at least for the poor people. I stand up for the poor people, stand up for the rich, I stand up for my kids. I've been accused of kids, I have to come before y'all, but that's all right, too. The Lord said they gonna do thing to hurt me. It hurt, but I'm a man to handle it. But I ask y'all to, let's come together, let's build one accord, we're gonna do things right in the name of Jesus. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has informal public comments? Yes, sir.
Regarding the parish closure, should I wait until it comes up on the agenda?
You can go ahead now. Yeah.
Thank you for letting me speak this evening regarding the Concord Lake Bridge closure. I own the gas station at 2355 Concord Lake Road, the Marathon Station. I just wanted to take this opportunity to convey my concerns to the county. We are a business that's been doing business there. My family's owned that location for 10-plus years. And while the DOT was acquiring the easements and the right-of-way for the bridge widening, they assured us that the bridge would remain open during construction, and at no times would there be closure of that bridge. We were told this at several points in time, and that was our understanding. Sometime towards the end of July, I was at the store, and one of the construction workers that is moving the utilities at the site told me that they're getting ready to close the bridge. And I was a little surprised, and I thought he was mistaken. But I wanted to verify that, and I called Division 10 the next day morning in Albemarle, and they confirmed that that is correct, the bridge will be closing. And that was the first time I had heard about it. I was shocked. I asked them what changed, how it changed, and they didn't have many answers for me. All they told me was they had got the necessary approvals from emergency services and the Chamber of Commerce, and they had communicated with the chamber. I'm pretty active in business in Cabarrus County, and I had not heard about it. So, I was shocked. I reached out to my neighbors to make sure that I hadn't missed something, and none of them knew about it. Everybody thought I was mistaken, just as I thought the construction worker was mistaken. So, long story short, I called city manager, we shared our concerns with him, been in touch with the mayor, he asked me to speak this evening. They're proposing closing the bridge down for one year, and I think we all know that that is probably very optimistic. It could be longer than that, and I know we cannot stay in business, that is going to put us at a dead-end street there. And I've talked to many of my neighbors on Executive Park Drive, Cloverleaf, and they're all just heavily concerned that they will not survive this bridge closure. So, from an economic perspective, we're very concerned. It's a matter of making it or not making it. And from a safety perspective, we do have some other concerns. We were told that they got approval from EMS, and they're going to meet the county response times by placing an ambulance across the bridge to be able to get to the patient in time. But my concern is, what about taking that patient back to the hospital? The detour is taking it back on Highway 29 and Dale Earnhardt, which are both construction zones. Both are going to undergo massive widening. I think Highway 29 is the official detour, and there's massive construction coming up there. So, I'm concerned that the safety aspect was approved based on that, because it does take, it takes about 10 minutes to get from Cloverleaf to the hospital right now without any construction. So, I'm concerned that when they do actually start widening those lines, it's going to be a lot longer than that. But just, I'm here asking for your assistance. Anything you can do to help us stop this bridge closure would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other formal, informal public comments before we move forward? All right, we'll move on to old business. Susie Morris from Planning Development proposed text amendments to Chapter Seven, and I think we do have a public hearing to go along with that, too.
This was a continued public hearing.
Continued. A public hearing that we left open when this matter was tabled two months ago?
That's correct. I had not planned on making a presentation this evening since the public hearing itself was held open. If you remember, at the last meeting, you all were at the point where you were ready to vote on the proposed amendment. If you need me to go back over it or answer any questions, though, I'd be happy to do so.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have questions for Ms. Morris? Okay, very good. Thank you. Okay, we do have a continued public hearing. If there is anyone present that would like to speak on this proposed text amendments to Chapter Seven, Text 2017-00004. And, okay, seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and move on to a vote on this text amendment. Does anyone have a motion in regards to this?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the Planning and Development proposed text amendments to Chapter Seven as presented.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Okay, and then item number two, which is in addition to old business, update on the sale of 2323 Concord Lake Road, and we're happy to have Kyle Billifur with us.
Good evening. We have had another bid for the sale of that property. This will be the second time I've been up in front of you about this. Back in May, you went for a price decrease down from what we had originally listed in December of 2016. The current offer has come in at $325,000. It's a different bid from the last person that tried to buy it. And basically, we're looking from guidance from the board, whether you want us to move forward with this. If we do, we have to go through the upset bid process, which means once we receive their 5% bid deposit, we would have to advertise for 10 days. And of course, there's a value that we have to bid at, that any other upset bids have to come in at a certain value. Currently, the board has listing that property at $375,000, and the offer again came in at $325,000. And it's approximately been up for about eight months.
Just to refresh everyone's memory, what was the highest bid we had received prior to this?
To this point, the highest bid was $300,000.
So, this, okay.
Currently, the bid before that was $250,000. So, this would represent the third bid we've had on it.
Okay, commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this one? If we approve or accept this bid, then you would begin the process for upset bids. Is that correct?
That is correct. The first thing I would do is reach out to the folks that made the offer and tell them that I needed their down payment. Once that is in our vault, then we go ahead and advertise for 10 days. If any upset bids come in, we obviously go with the highest bid. If there's duplicate high bids, we go with the first one received, and that starts the process all over again.
You still have the right to look at it after the end of the upset bid period and decide to either accept the offer or reject it.
Right.
So, any decision you make tonight is not final on it until after the upset bid period's finished.
Okay, so, an emotion to accept the current bid would be the appropriate action, accept or reject, tonight?
Subject to the upset bid period.
Right.
Procedure.
Very good. Okay, do I hear a motion regarding this matter?
Mr. Chairman, it's been eight months, I believe, since we advertised this, and Kyle was saying this is the third bid, which is obviously higher than what we have had of any of them.
Correct.
And I'm in the thinking, I may be by myself, but I'm thinking that we probably need to go ahead and accept that bid subject to the upset bid process. And with that being said, I would make that motion if we accept that.
Okay. We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
No, a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the bid of $325,000 for the sale of 2323 Concord Lake Road, subject to the upset bid process. Any discussion?
The only question I would have is, what kind of activity have you had on that in the last couple of months?
They've had a few showings. More recently, the flurry has been this one group that has been constantly in. But we had about two possibilities where they came to me and said, somebody's looking pretty seriously at it. But, you know, some of the things with that property that we've discussed, the layout and the age of the HVAC units, has, I'd imagine, scared some of those groups away.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, hearing none. All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is the consent agenda, which you all have before you, consisting of items that we have discussed previously at our work session. Do I hear a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. Motion passes, and we move to new business. First up, we have an economic development investment discussion. We're happy to have Robbie Carney and Samantha Grass to talk about that, and then we will have a public hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners of Cabarrus County. I want to first thank you for the opportunity to present Project Hercules to you this evening. My name is Robert Carney, and I represent the Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation. Amazon or Project Hercules II is considering establishing a Kannapolis facility to add to their existing network of online retail fulfillment facilities. The targeted site is located at 6501 Macedonia Church Road, near the intersection of Highway 73 and Kannapolis Parkway. They would be leasing the facility from the TPA Group, who will be developing the site and constructing a 1 million-square-foot facility. In addition to the real property investment of $50 million that the TPA Group will make In addition to the real property investment of 50 million that the TPA Group will make, Amazon estimates they will invest over 35 million in personal property at this Kannapolis location. Their plans include hiring 600-plus full-time employees with an average wage of $31,140 per year. Their total annual payroll is approximately 18.7 million. Their investment exceeds the minimum requirements of the Economic Development Grant Program. Based on the estimated 35 million, a three-year, 85% economic development grant from Cabarrus County would equal $624,750. Net revenue to the county during that same three-year grant term is $110,250. Earlier this month, the Kannapolis City Council unanimously supported incentives for this project. We request that the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners consider a motion to approve the resolution granting an incentive not to exceed $624,750 for Amazon's personal property investment in a 1 million square foot industrial building located at 6501 Macedonia Church Road. On behalf of Cabarrus Economic Development Corporation, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have on this project.
Okay, questions for Mr. Carney?
Are the jobs all full-time or is there a mixture of part-time? I can't remember.
Yes. So that 600-plus jobs are all considered full-time jobs. Now, on top of that, they do state that they're going to have seasonally adjusted temporary employment that they'll bring online as well.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And this does call for a public hearing. So at this time, I will open the public hearing and invite anyone to the podium that would like to comment on this project. Okay, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And Commissioners, what would be your pleasure on this item?
Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve the Economic Development Investment Grant for Project Hercules as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a s- motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Does that motion have enough detail in it? Do we need to specify if we have a three-year, 85%? Or since it says as presented, does that?
I think that's sufficient.
Yes. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. It's a tremendous opportunity, I think, for us in Cabarrus County. We've heard quite a bit of publicity about this project. I think the, the fact that Cabarrus County is really developing into a crossroads of commerce, we're talking about a project like this, which is heavily into e-commerce, being located just blocks from one of the largest retail shopping areas in, in the state of North Carolina. So I think we're fortunate to have the best of both worlds and very excited to, to see this coming. Next on our agenda, from Planning and Development, Susie Morris regarding additional text amendments.
Good evening. If you remember, this text amendment is the amendment we talked about at the work session that would eliminate the percentage of accessory structures allowed based on lot size. And we would use the default permitting district for the impervious and for the structural coverage for those lots when the folks are seeking permits. You will need to hold a public hearing.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Morris? We will open the public hearing to this, regarding Planning and Development's proposed text amendments to Chapter 7. Text, I'm making, I'm looking to make sure I've got the right one. Yeah, Chapter 7, Text 2017-0005. Is there anybody that would like to speak in regards to this text amendment? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And this, is this ready for a vote tonight?
Yes.
Okay. So do I hear a motion that we approve the proposed text amendments as presented?
I'm moved.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And then we have an additional text amendment.
Second Amendment is to, is a proposal to amend Chapter 4, our overlay districts. As we talked about at the work session, there are also some percentages there that are conflicting percentages. So this would eliminate the percentage and would allow, again, for the zoning district to be used for permitting, which helps the non-conforming lots that we have.
Right. Okay. Okay, any questions for Susie? All right, we will open the public hearing on this text amendment and invite anyone to the podium that would like to speak. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and move to a vote. Do I hear a motion that we approve the proposed text amendments to Chapter 4, Text 2017-0006?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I'll just add that both this text amendment and the one just before it are, I think, correct some issues that, that, that some of us have been concerned about and create, gives a little more flexibility to addressing some problems. So I applaud staff for, for bringing those to us. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next up from Finance, Susan Fearington, Resolution Approving Installment Contract Financing for Public Projects.
At our work session, if you remember, we had quite a lengthy discussion about the upcoming building of the high school, performance learning center, and the parking deck. So tonight, the next step in our approval, in the debt approval process is to approve the resolution approving installment contract financing for various public projects in amount not to exceed 128,000, 128 million, 105. Couple extra zeros, sorry.
Yeah.
We wish 128 million, 105,000. So that's the next step. I did send out to the board several documents concerning some questions that were, we had at the August 7th meeting with the high school backup and the cadet calendar, a couple of different things. So if there's any questions.
Any questions for Susan? And I think, as you've mentioned several times before, approving this doesn't mean that we're borrowing all of it. It just authorizes it and gets the wheels in motion, right?
That is correct. Currently, we're right under 80 million that we're going to borrow.
Okay. Very good. All right. Do I hear a motion to approve the resolution for installment contract financing for various public projects up to 128,105, 128 million, 105,000?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Could I suggest that the, that the motion in this matter be read exactly as it's in the agenda?
Yes, sir.
I know our bond counsel always likes it that way.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution approving installment contract, contract financing for various public projects in an aggregate principal amount up to 128 million, 105,000. An execution and delivery by the Cabarrus County Development Corporation of limited obligation bonds related thereto, authorizing the execution and delivery of related documents in connection therewith, and providing for certain other related matters.
Well stated. Do I hear a second?
We have a good one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we're happy to have Bob Bushy from Transportation Division to talk with us about the fiscal year rope application.
Thank you. We're here tonight for our annual FY18 Rural Operating Assistance Program from the state of North Carolina. This grant offers transportation funding for elderly and handicapped in the amount of $98,650, for employment transportation in the amount of $41,683, and for rural general public in the amount of $68,524, for a total amount this year of $208,857. This grant does not require a county match except for the rural general public, 10% match, which is we are allowed to obtain through fares, which we charge $3 per trip. There's no public hearing required. We are asking for approval to submit the application to the state along with the associated resolution.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Bushy? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I would make a motion to approve the grant application and certified statement.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. And we move to the item that we added to the agenda, which is G7. We have heard, I think all of you have gotten quite a, we heard public comments tonight about the Lake Concord Road closing, the bridge over 85. We've also received quite a few emails about this. I think the city has discussed it. They have, have issued a letter encouraging the Department of Transportation to reconsider that action. We did discuss this several months ago at one of our work sessions. They came and talked with us about the EMS issues and, and how we might adjust those with some of these bridge closings. I think at that time, they informed us that they plan to close four at one time. One of the things that we said to them was, you know, we hope that you go about informing the public about these plans. It seems that that did not happen. So I would propose that we send a letter. Let's see, one other thing, and I should have done this probably in public comments, but county manager has asked, has received a letter from Cabarrus Regional Chamber of Commerce, and they have asked that that be entered into our minutes. Would you like to read that at this time, Mr. Downs?
This is a letter from Barbie Jones, the executive director for the Chamber of Commerce. We are writing on behalf of the Cabarrus Regional Chamber of Commerce to express our grave concern about pending closure of Lake Concord Road Bridge connecting Concord and Kannapolis as a part of the I-85 widening project. Over the last few weeks, it has been brought to our attention that local business owners near the bridge were never communicated with regarding the potential closure. When the project was initially planned, they were told the current bridge would remain open while the bridge was constructed, while the new bridge was constructed. Imagine the horror of small business owner learning from a construction worker that the bridge you rely on to keep your business functional is now being closed for at least six months with no prior warning. Further, when contracting, when contracting the Department of Transportation, this business owner was told that the chamber was responsible for notifying all businesses. This was not something we ever said we would do, nor should we be expected to do. Upon further expla- examination, it appears that very few were communicated with about this project. Both the city of Concord and the city of Kannapolis were not informed, and they could have been, and they could have been great communication sources with capabilities of pulling together public information sessions. We still believe there are other businesses that do not know the proposed change in plans. Besides the economic impact of the various small businesses located in this corridor, this closure greatly restricts access between the two municipalities. Exit 58 and exit 60 are both significantly affected with the widening project, and increased traffic and safety concerns already, are already issues. The proposed detour route will take a large number of motorists down Country Club Drive, a narrow and winding road that is already crowded. Lake Concord Road is easy and quick access for many to Carolina's Healthcare Center Northeast. And while first responders were informed and have a plan to place, a plan in place, should the bridge close, Cabarrus County residents will not know. And if they are driving a loved one to the hospital, chances are they will be limited in their abilities to get there in a timely manner, and restricted access could result in deaths. We're asking that you, we are asking you to ask the North Carolina Department of Transportation to honor the commitment they initially made to these business owners and construct the new bridge over Lake Concord Road while keeping the old bridge functional. We believe that even if it should add time to the project's completion, it is the right and best option for our county and our residents. Thank you for your service and for all you do to keep Cabarrus County a great place to live and work. Thank you, too, for your consideration of our request. Best regards, Barbie Jones, Executive Director, and Joe Horton, Chairman of the Board of Directors.
Okay, thank you very much. Of course, you've heard that letter, you've heard the discussion. I think all of us have received calls and emails about it as well. I have given everyone a copy of a letter that I would propose that we send in support of this, and I will read it if you'll bear with me. This is addressed to James H. Trogdon III, Secretary of Transportation, North Carolina Department of Transportation. Secretary Trogdon, on behalf of the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners and the citizens of Cabarrus County, I would like to express our strong objection to the North Carolina Department of Transportation's decision to deviate from the original plan of replacing the bridge on Lake Concord Road, Highway 3, across Interstate 85. The advertised plan was to replace and construct while allowing the traffic to continue flowing through the affected area, a plan that would have minimal negative impacts on surrounding property owners and businesses. The Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners, Cabarrus County Chamber of Commerce, and businesses located in the immediate area ask that the North Carolina Department of Transportation reconsider its revised plan for this project. The new plan removes and replaces the bridge with no alternative or diversion bridge. Without the ability for traffic to move freely through the area, the project will strain the economic viability of adjacent businesses, potentially impact public safety providers' response times, and cause additional traffic congestion on an already busy road. Additionally, we have serious concerns about the lack of notification and opportunity for public feedback. Many of the people and groups affected by the unadvertised plan were only recently made aware of the change. There was no public meeting or informational letter about the changed plan and its potential impact to the area. Addressing these issues is in the best interest of our residents and businesses. We believe that the North Carolina Department of Transportation will make the right decision and revert back to its original plan to replace the bridge while leaving travel lanes open on Lake Concord Road. Thank you in advance for your consideration. And I would place that in the form of a motion that we send this letter to Secretary Trogdon at NCDOT.
Second.
Okay, and I have a second to that motion. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
I do want to say just a couple of things about this. I think it's an excellent letter, asking the DOT to reconsider their decision, revert back to the original decision. However, I feel like that we need to be, in this letter here, a little more specific about the impact, as I sent you all an email that you received. My wife and I, just out of curiosity, after I got Ms. Jones's letter from the chamber, so out of curiosity, my wife and I just went around last night to look at the businesses there in that area. And within a half a mile of that proposed bridge closure, I stopped counting at 150 businesses. Now, it's not like we're talking about a rural area, you know, where you've got a store here and a store there and that kind of thing. We're talking 150 businesses plus. And there's a couple of apartment complexes in that area, many medical facilities and things like that, that have an adverse effect on if this bridge was to close. And I tell you, we just, for whatever we can do to see to it that this don't happen, we need to do it. But I like to include in- But I like to include in this proposed letter here more specific about what the impact will be with the businesses. Whether we mention the residents as far as the apartments and that kind of thing, that's here and there, but, I mean, it's going to be bad either way, but we want to protect all of the citizens of Cabarrus County if we can, and, but, that's the only comments I have. I'd like to see us add that some way, so that the secretary, when he gets this, he won't think that we're just a bunch of whiners down here because we getting a little business, you know, getting a bridge and closing one, but it's affecting 150 businesses, and the families associated with that. It's detrimental that we keep that bridge open while the new one's being constructed.
I think we can certainly add that to the letter and include that in the motion. Do you agree, second or, okay, any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes, and we will make those adjustments to the letter and send that right away. Okay, we move now to appointments to boards and committees. We have an opening on the Active Living and Parks Commission. We have, we need to make an appointment to fill the Concord representative vacancy that resulted from Kevin Bryant's resignation. We had talked about this, I think, at our last meeting, and there was some question as to eligibility and addresses and so forth, and so that has all been addressed and double-checked by the folks at Active Living and Parks, and I think at that time, we had a motion, and I will make that motion again, to appoint Charles Grimsley to the Active Living and Parks Commission as the Concord Planning Area Representative to complete an unexpired term ending January 31st, 2018. Do I hear a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next item on the agenda is an appointment to the Cardinal Innovations Board, if I can get to the right page. The term of appointment for Betty Bab on the Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Committee expired on July 31st, 2017. Ms. Bab would like to serve another term. She also serves on the Home and Community Block Grant Committee. If reappointed, an exception to the Service on Multiple Boards provision of the appointment policy will be needed for her. I would make a motion that we reappoint Betty Bab to the Cardinal Innovations Healthcare Solutions Community Oversight Committee for a three-year term ending July 31st, 2020, including an exception to the Service on Multiple Boards provision of the appointment policy. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we have an appointment to the Mental Health Advisory Board. An appointment is needed to fill the vacant local attorney position on the Mental Health Advisory Board. I would make a motion that we appoint Jay White to the Mental Health Advisory Board for a two-year term ending December 31st, 2019. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That motion passes. Next, we have an appointment to the Concord Downtown Development Corporation. The Concord Downtown Development Corporation has requested a staff, that wording's a little unusual there, if I get to the right place. They have requested that we appoint a staff member to fill the board position that they have created for Cabarrus County, and I do not have that recommendation down here.
There was, they requested a board member or a staff person to be appointed.
Okay, the member was missing from that sentence.
I believe the discussion at the last meeting was that, 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 that you were, were looking to possibly appoint Mr. Marshall.
I would move that we appoint Jonathan Marshall to represent the county on the Concord Downtown Development Corporation Board. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. All opposed, no. That motion passes. Congratulations, Mr. Marshall. All right, okay, you have in your agenda a number of informational reports. At this time, I would open the floor to receive updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or own various boards or committees. Seeing one have anything they'd like. Yes, ma'am?
I'm going to pass, if you'll each take one and pass it down. That will be presented on Wednesday, so it is in advance of a presentation at the MPO Board, but those are the projects in Division 10 associated with the Cabarrus Rowan MPO Board, so you're welcome to look over those front and back. We have a lot of things going on, and most of the comments are fairly self-explanatory, but if you have other questions, either Mr. Marshall or I would be able to answer those individually, but those are just updates.
Great, thank you. Okay, any other updates? Okay, I'd like to say kudos to our library system. I serve as a liaison to their Board of Trustees. They had many informative and educational opportunities surrounding the eclipse, and I think distributed many thousands of pairs of eclipse glasses through those programs, so they do a tremendous job, and I'll be anxious to hear some of the numbers that they had participating in those programs. Anything else? Okay, then we will move to general comments by board members, if anyone has anything in addition. Hearing none, we do have need of a closed session tonight to discuss pending litigation and economic development. I would make a motion that we go into closed session for...
Add personnel as well.
Yes, add personnel. Okay, that'd be litigation, economic development, and personnel.
You made the motion.
I'm in the, yeah, I'm working on it. Okay, we'd make a motion that we go into closed session for North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, A3, 4, and 6, to discuss pending litigation, economic development, and personnel matters. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. We are now in closed session. Thank you.